Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Yeah. I've mostly stayed muted because I'm a sleeping kid here, but I am here.
Mike? Thank you. Good evening. By way of introduction, my name is Matt Concord and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'd like to call, order the meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty five. Can we have a roll call, please? Commissioner Caesar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Meduski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Mr. Craig? Absent. Vice Chair Fields?
Present.
Chair Campart?
Present.
Thank you. We'll next move on to minutes. Has everyone had the chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections? Yes. Commissioner Zissler?
Yes. On the section about Commissioner's feedback on the study session. This is page five or six of the minutes. I don't see, one of the things that the planning commission, the staff wanted feedback on was moving from three year to five year. The timing on the length of the application being viable, right? Is that, am I saying that right? So, so there's nothing in here that suggests that we were either had a consensus or disagreement or varying views on it. But I know that some of us talked about, I personally didn't think the five year needed to be required because we have the option on a on a, on an individual basis to give extensions. But I don't recall, I don't think everybody commented on that. I think some people commented on. But I'd like to see that included, since that was one of the things that the staff asked us to give feedback on. You all recall, you recall that, from the three minutes, whether we should go from three year to five year?
I do remember talking about it, the actual extension. I don't remember, but I did because talking about it. Stuff?
Yeah, I'll just say I went through the minutes pretty thoroughly with, because we want to make sure the council hears the feedback you had. And my, my notes was reconciled with the minutes. I mean, you had broad positive feedback on generally on the measures. We didn't get a lot of specific feedback on that item, so the minutes just reflected that.
Okay, I, I, I guess my question is, why isn't there something in here that states what the commission's comments were on it or feedback on it? We got like seven different points on feedback, but that, that was one of the things that the staff specifically asked us to provide feedback on. So, you know, if, if I think there should be another bullet that at least, you know, I commented on it, saying that I didn't think it was necessary to go five years. If any of the other commissioners want to speak up, let's say, well, yeah, I think I said, yeah. Then I think we should have a bullet on it, okay, so that it gets transmitted, you know, as feedback from the commission to the council. Without, rather than not having any.
I would, I would say we should, we should add that as an amendment to the minutes. Just so it's reflected. And to me, these are parts of the lowest hanging fruits of things we could do to spur development.
Yeah, I'm not debating it now. I'm just saying, we had the study session. They asked us for feedback. They put, they put some of the feedback down. It's pretty brief. But that specific one was actually listed as one of the things that we were supposed to talk about. And we did talk about it. And there's nothing referencing in the minutes to that, so.
That's, that's a good point.
How were the minutes generated now? I know we had conversations about different ones. For different sources of generating.
Yeah, I'll, Ken jump in if I'm missing anything. So we, we have looked to streamline them. We take the direct transcript, takes all, every verbatim, all the words you say during the meeting. We do use an AI assist to summarize that. And from that, Ken looks at them and staff looks at them to polish and finalize.
Because they're pretty condensed.
It's true. That's been our approach for a few new, few years now. Action minutes generally are industry standard for minutes.
Okay, um.
Adam has his hand raised.
Adam?
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to add is that I want to emphasize that I think that the range of opinion about inclusionary, inclusionary zoning and BMR mandates went from, we should keep them as is, to we should get rid of them entirely. Think specifically that inclusionary zoning requirements beyond what's useful for state density bonus doesn't is removing more housing than it adds. Wanted, would like to make that clear in the minutes.
So, Adam, are you saying that that was not covered in the minutes or? I just want to make sure I understand.
The phrasing is mixed views on inclusionary policy structure and feasibility of BMR mandates, which isn't very specific about what exactly the range of opinion on the commission was.
Okay.
I, I, I agree. It's, it doesn't really give any meat to the what, what
Context.
We, the comments were. So, yeah, again, we've talked about the, the the conciseness of the minutes and I've, I've expressed some concern that it gets too concise. And I think in something like a study session, I mean, it's one thing to talk about what the commissioners thought about putting a second story on a house, okay? It's pretty straightforward. But we had a study session about this that is about something really important on the housing. And my personal opinion would be that the feed, that's what we're here for. We were here to give our opinions and feedback. And if, if it's summarized in seven bullets, doesn't seem like very much. To me, it's, I don't know if that's a reflection on, you know, I mean, I, I know that staff has said, well, you know, if the, if in the past the council wants to hear what the commission says, they can look at the video. Of course, you know, videos don't always get put up right away. But, but, and that's a hard one. It's like, yeah, I don't, I don't know if the council is, all the council looks at the video. I think under certain circumstances, like a study session where feedback is, that's the goal, then the feedback should be less concise. I don't know how to put it better. That, that there should be some more meat to it that, that expresses, we all talked about it for quite some time. I mean, we, we were here talking about it for a while. And, and I don't know if the seven bullets reflects that.
Those are just.
And one of them isn't even in there. So it should have been, we stayed bullets. So I'm just, you know, I, I'm, I'm putting it out there. I, I think there's a, I, I hear that there are other commissioners that have concerns about that too.
Thanks. So.
So I, I would like to have an amendment. You know, if we're going to pass these minutes out, I'd like an amendment that includes another bullet regarding that there was, there were varying positions, unless somebody else has a better idea, varying positions on whether the three years should be extended to five years. At least that.
All right, okay. So, so let's, let's act on that first. So we have a motion for that item. Is there a second?
Well, yeah, you can just get a, a consensus on whether the amendment is okay.
I think so. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Let's do a quick roll call on the eight bullet. And then we will address Adam's point.
Mr. Scissor?
Aye. Commissioner Meduski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davis?
Aye.
Chair Campart?
Aye.
Okay, so that one passes. And then, Adam, do you have a, do you have a recommended wording for the item you brought up? So it would be a little bit more extensive?
Sure, sure. I would phrase that as views on inclusionary zoning requirements ranging from the status quo to getting rid of them entirely.
Are, are you suggesting that we, we had a consensus on eliminating BMR? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm suggesting that the range of opinions went from keep them as they are to eliminate them entirely. Just that was
All right.
The range of, range of opinions.
Okay, I get it.
Okay, I'm, I'm clear now as to what you're asking for. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, there, nobody feared a motion. We're going to do a motion on.
I'll move to have that replacement language in there.
Because we can just do a motion that includes that amendment. We don't have to do it separately.
Well, we already voted on.
We can do a motion on approving the minutes that includes the amendment.
Okay. That's fine.
I, I, I moved to approve the minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five with the amended item that Adam just stated and the previously amended item that we voted on that adds a bullet on the three to five year issue.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second roll call, please. Commissioner Scissor?
Aye.
Commissioner Meduski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fields?
Aye.
Chair Campart?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So the minutes as amended or approved? Next item is communications, agenda modifications.
Yeah, two things. I don't want to elaborate last time. I'll just offer hearing the commission feedback and knowing we actually put together a transcript. Happy to have the transcript attached when this goes to the council, see if that helps the council. Commissioners this or watching videos takes a long time. There is elegant dance to try and summarize study sessions and vagueness and too specific, but if it helps the council and make sure it, they reflect truly the discussion you have, we can also attach the transcript. Under this item, no additional communications changes. You will note the request to continue the second agenda item we have tonight.
Okay.
Nothing additional.
Thank you for that. Okay, oral communications. This portion of meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address the planning commission on matters of committee concern that are not listed on the agenda. In the interest of time, the chair may limit speakers to five minutes. Please be aware that state law prohibits commission from acting on non-agenda's items. However, the chair may refer to staff for follow. Having said that, is there anybody here that wants to address the commission? Seeing none, anybody online? No? Okay. So we move on to our public hearing. This one is a conditional use permit for nine eighty Camden Avenue Public Hearing to consider the application of Dell Auto Group, DVA Dell Exotic Auto Works to allow the installation of a vehicle spray painting booth, motor vehicle painting within existing motor vehicle repair facility on property located at nine eighty Camden Avenue. The application under consideration is a conditional use permit. PLN number two oh two five dash thirty two. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed category exempt from C Corp. Any commission action is final on this appeal in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Banner Larissa? Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just try to share my screen. Thank you so much. Ken, our administrative analyst, and thank you, Chair Kim Carr. The item before you tonight is a conditional use permit. PLN twenty twenty five thirty two for a project at nine eighty Camden Avenue. The project site is Zone PD Plan Development. It is, as you can see on the screen, located at the terminus of the Camden Avenue cul-de-sac between Santa Moss Expressway and the Los Gatos Trail. The project site is about a half an acre and is currently developed with a commercial building that currently operates as a motor vehicle repair facility that was constructed sometime in the eighties. It's generally surrounded by other commercial and industrial uses. So administratively, a commercial or motor vehicle repair facility and a motor vehicle painting activity is allowed in the general commercial light industrial land use through a conditional use permit. By definition, any motor vehicle painting is required to be located entirely within an enclosed structure. This proposal to install a compliant spray booth within an existing building that already operates as a motor vehicle repair facility will not propose any exterior changes. Something to note, the existing facility is non-conforming due to a lack of a CUP. The use was originally allowed by the site and architectural review permit. However, due to a code update in two thousand and four, this type of use now requires a CUP. Therefore, any expansion or changes to the existing use would trigger a CUP for the underlying land use as well. And so as you can see, that's our permit trigger is the installation of the spray booth will increase the intensity, therefore requiring a CUP for both existing motor vehicle repair facility and the paint use as well. So the proposed project, as discussed, is to install one spray painting booth within the enclosed structure. Based on the project description provided by the applicant, the applicant is projecting to have six full-time, one part-time employee working on a referral basis with some walk-ins, four scheduled visits per week and eight walk-ins per month. Especially, specifically working on high-end personal vehicles and not commercial vehicles. And the existing site already has five service lifts, and this will be including one new enclosed spray booth. As we can see from the proposed floor plan, highlighted in pink will be the proposed spray painting booth in addition to the existing vehicle lifts that are already inside. And so, because the proposed spray painting booth is consistent with the light industrial zoning and general plan, and it will operate entirely indoors in compliance with all of the applicable standards and is generally compatible with the surrounding uses and that the site is fully developed and can accommodate the use without any adverse impacts to traffic, health, safety, or general welfare, and also meeting the six required findings for the conditional use permit. It is staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit. This concludes my presentation, and I can take questions at this time. And the applicant is also here in the audience.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for staff? You can start from your side.
Yeah, I'm not clear on whether or not the spray booth is in effect or whether this is a new thing.
This will be a new proposed spray booth.
Okay, so have they been doing spray painting there?
Not with a permit.
Okay, so it's been, they have been doing unpermitted spray painting?
Not at this time. It was noted to our code enforcement that there had been a potential installation. And so we did not allow that the applicant to continue the use after.
Okay, and, and although I know that there's a whole bunch of stuff that is, is in the in the information, just, just to clarify, you know, actually, I, we didn't advise that we had been at the site or not. I went by the site yesterday. And it's right, it butts up next to the Los Gatos Creek. And so I assume, and I guess it's written down in here, I noted that there are there are approvals that are looked at by the what, what environmental water quality agencies to make sure that that this is acceptable in terms of not having any, any well, I guess air too, also, not just water, but where the, where any toxic toxic toxicity from the paint either in the air or falling into the creek is avoided. Am I correct on that?
So yes, the application has been reviewed by the County Fire District who noted that the proposed spray booth will be located entirely within the existing structure. Furthermore, there is a requirement from the Fire District within the Fire Code that says that any spray booths have a minimum of thirty foot radius from any property lines in order to ensure no runoff or carrying, carrying of particulates, as you were mentioning. And so the proposal both was approved by the Fire District and also meets the requirements as set forth by the Fire District. Further, a review of the spray booth will be conducted as listed in the conditions of approval from the Fire District. The application will run through the county's hazardous materials reviewing board for further compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I answered my questions.
Okay, thank you.
No questions.
No questions, okay. Commissioner Buckbinder, do you have any questions?
Yes, just for staff. In terms of what was presented with the rewrite of our city's municipal code, would this be one of those minor changes that would be simplified?
There's a distinction here with this application in that the underlying use of the motor vehicle repair facility requires a CUP, a conditional use permit. And this operation is currently non-conforming due to a lack of a conditional use permit. So any change would trigger a new conditional use permit for the new use and also for the existing motor vehicle repair facility.
Right, under the proposed changes, would any of that be different?
Not to my knowledge, because of, this is invoking the non-conforming section rather than a brand new use.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Buckbinder. Vice Chair? Good, okay. So I have a question. This is more of a collision repair or like a mechanical auto repair? You're adding?
My understanding is it, it's more of an auto repair, working on these higher-end personal vehicles. The applicant is in the audience. If you have more questions about the exact type of repairs that they offer.
Okay. Perfect. So I will ask that question when they come up. That was basically my question, so. Okay, so we can open it to public hearing? Any? Yes?
The applicant wasn't anticipating to speak at this hearing, but if you have any questions, they're available.
I would like to hear them speak, so I will be inviting them. Is there anybody online that would want to? Nobody, okay? So if applicant can please come up and we have some questions for you. Thank you.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carlos Costa. I'm the owner of the Dell Exotic Auto Works.
Okay.
And I'm Mario Masse, assisting with the application.
Wonderful. So I know I have a question, but I'm gonna go and, no questions? No questions? As the book pointed, oh, there comes a book pointed, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Just curious, I, I think staff mentioned you'd started installing the spray booth and then we came and said, hey, you need a conditional use permit? Like what happened there? Could the documentation have been clear? Or like, just curious for our understanding, like how did that happen?
We've been leasing another property called Dell Streamline, where we do our spray painting. And, and we're trying to downsize the economy and, and we decided to bring it in-house instead of subletting the property.
Oh, so you were, you were moving something you own from a different property to IC, okay. That, I understand how that would happen. All right, thank you.
Okay, and my question, you know, I would repeat that, do you, is this more of a collision repair type facility or like a auto?
And, you know, thirty-five years ago, we'd be a collision repair center, but these days we call it just paint enhancement. We're a luxury cars, Los Gatos, we support them. They nominate us as their Lamborghini, Aston Martin Rolls Royce Finley Repair Center. And basically, we do paint correction and a lot of enhanced, enhancing. We try to avoid any heavy collisions. Again, typically just cater to the exotics of the high-end clientele, Los Gatos and, and so on.
Got it. And in your other facility, is that in Campbell, the, the one you're downsizing?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have had no code enforcement issues, you know, in that?
No, no, again, we're more of a niche market. We're not a production shop.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question.
So, so, so did you just not think that there was, when you were moving, that you needed to get a new conditional use permit? And that's why it kind of slipped through the cracks?
The, the facility actually, I mean, when, when the facility was purchased. Right. It was automotive repair prior, so it was just assumed basically that this is an auto body or automotive repair building built for automotive repair. That's why the, the purchase took place. So the, it was just carried on. But, you know, then code enforcement said, no, you guys need a CUP for this type of work. So we went through the extensive, or I guess semi-extensive paperwork to, to get it, to get it accomplished.
Can you say how long that took?
We've been working to permit for the other locations since before COVID.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Long. Okay, if there's no other questions? Thank you. I'm gonna close public hearing. Back to staff, any clarifications?
Sorry. Yes, I wasn't sure if this was the question about this particular permit, but just for a timeline, understanding this application was submitted on March seventh.
Okay, so, so regarding the CUP, it's been two or three months?
Correct.
Three months. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so any discussions?
I know, it, it, it looks fine to me. They have a going business and I guess paint, paint boxes are, you know, paint facilities are pretty common and that's a an area that is zone for that, so I, I see no problem with it. an area that is zone for that, so I, I see no problem with it. I'm happy to prove it.
Wonderful, any other comments? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Likewise, I don't see any reason why this isn't a perfectly reasonable use for the area, seems to be what the zone is for.
Okay, thank you, and my own comments are, as the, one of our fellow commissioners said, this is right next to the creek, so it's pretty sensitive environment, you know, so it's great that it's indoor, so there's less chance of any runoff into the creek or any hazardous material being transported. So thank you for complying with the codes and with the thing now. Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
We're missing Mike, he always does the motions.
Oh, you know, where's?
Okay, I'll be Mike. I moved to allow the installation of a vehicle spray painting booth, motor vehicle painting within existing motor vehicle repair facility on property located at nine eighty Camden Avenue in the PD Plan Velvet Zoning District for Dell Auto Group.
We got a motion, any second? If we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sizer? Aye. Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Okay, this motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is directors, I guess, Director Eastwood? Oh, that's right, the second, the second or, or the third item, the second public hearing and the third item is on six hundred East Hamilton. Do we need to take a vote to defer or?
Yeah, should do a motion and an action to continue the item.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue that item?
I'll make a motion to continue the third item, discussion of six hundred East Hamilton Avenue to the meeting of June twenty fourth.
Okay, you got a motion?
A second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you for that. And new business, planning commissioner, subcommittee reports? Anybody has reports?
No, I mean, I just, I just, I just want to comment, you know, we're overdue on a report and, and we, we, we had some delays, partly because I was a slacker, but the other delay now is, is Mike has some personal issues that have kept us from finalizing, we're really close to where we have a draft that we'll put, we'll go with the staff and then hopefully bring it to you. Either the next meeting or meeting afterwards.
Okay, thank you for that. And I know the other subcommittee, you know, we, we will have a report as well soon, but not now. Committee Development Director?
When you're so fast, I'll update you on a few things and hopefully still get you up here before it gets started.
Record time.
Very happy to report, I didn't know if I noticed this to you before, we set up an ADU express permitting program. So in case of all, you can come in and apply, and if you meet qualifications, aren't too hard, you can get a permit to build an ADU within three days. Wow, that's kind of a land speed record, most agencies are two to six weeks, and our staff just wanted to stamp a program to help get the Adu's terminated out really fast. Got a nice write-up in the San Jose spotlight, and then there was a little CBS News piece on it, so I'm happy to forward the link if you have any interest. Who goes to our building staff for standing it up?
Can I just ask, so, how, how did the, the city manage to do that and make it possible?
Yeah, you have to dedicate resources, so we had to collaborate with our fire deputy or fire marshal, County Fire, to make sure they could dedicate the review in a short period and have our planners review in a short period in public works. We didn't want these, they're pretty straightforward these days, you get big houses, big projects, and the Adu's generally are very streamlined. So we didn't want them to get stuck in the queue behind big projects. So we just got a commitment to take them in a separate queue, and we're limited to two weeks, so it doesn't overwhelm folks, haven't that capacity, and they just dedicate time during that two-day period to do it push them out the door.
And does it also apply to junior Adu's and attached Adu's?
It would be, yeah, I don't, you know, that's a good question. I, I'll come back on the JADs, we need to think about that, they're actually much easier. But let me verify before I give you an answer, and the attached Adu's, yes.
Do you require, you know, topo boundary surveys for some of these, or, because I know San Jose, as we know, you know, as long as it looks like you got your set back.
Yeah, I mean, generally if, and I, you know, I'd ask my building folks for details, but generally if you have indications of where the property boundary is, usually there's demarcations in the street, like, I'm trying to remember, landmarks in the street, you can go off of ninety percent of the time, the fence does indicate the site property. If there's enough to indicate out there where the property boundaries are at, it's fine. We do require before they pour the foundation, that actually is, a surveyor does come in and verify. So that's a check and balance, just to make sure that there's not issues before you actually pour the foundation.
I know one of the things we get at, at my place of work is people say, I just want to know the boundary on one side, and it's like, it doesn't work that way, you gotta do the whole
Yeah.
boundary and then report on the side you want, but it is not like you can just set one side, you know, unless pipes were in the ground
Right.
for had, then.
Exactly.
But if, but if you have to recalculate where it is, then.
Surveying from scratch is, is very expensive and difficult. Most of the lots in Campbell were created by track maps or subdivision maps that have reference points.
Okay, thank you for that.
On other news, it is budget season, the budget sitting some challenges for next year, the headline news is, of course, as you know, the sales tax measure that was passed by the voters, there was a lawsuit over it. That lawsuit continues, and unfortunately for the city, as long as the lawsuit is active, the money is escrow, which is the city can't take in additional sales tax revenue. That does put a pinch on the budget, so we're not, no point of, we're not the point of any staff cuts. I know we have had to cease our temporary staffing services, and community development does have quite a few. And at this point, there's a freeze on vacancies, and in community development, we have a frozen planner opening, this is Tracy Tam, and a building inspection, so we are, I mean, with the staff, we're likely seeing a reduction in services, we just can't manage the load there is with staff, so and we'll absolutely let our customers know, but that's just the reality of not having enough staff to handle the permits coming in, so that's unfortunately the situation with the budget. Two kind of good things, kind of shift away from that, one is we do, city did hire an economic development manager, can't remember if that notice went out for the commission. His name is Nate Donato Weinstein, he comes very well regarded from San Jose, he was the downtown manager. And I'm gonna try and get him to come and talk to you folks. At some point, we want to look at version two point O of economic development regulatory reform streamlining, and hopefully it'll be a part of that. And then sometimes if there's a commercial project and there's the lens of land use and, but there's also the lens of economic impacts, you might see him come as Leslie did before and just sort of advise the commission on the economic development aspects of the project. And then last but not least, we do have another American Planning Association conference coming up, comes up every year. This one's at the end of September, it's in beautiful Monterey. So it's not Fresno or other places, maybe not as appealing, no offense Fresno, but we do have money in the budget, so we will, between Ken and I, will push out that information to you, and if you'd like to sign up, I hope you do. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, so I think, speaking of economic development, has these naming rights a possibility for the city? I know like some universities, they, you know, have people who want to have a legacy, donors, they so much to put their name in a building, you know?
Oh, interesting. I don't know much around, you know, I know, know that exists, I don't know if that's been socialized.
I know that exists as well, I, I do not know the legal basis for a public entity to do that, though, but I can, I can look into it.
Yes, this is a possibility. Okay, unless there is any other item? Any other questions? We're gonna adjourn the meeting to June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, seven P M. Thank you.